And good morning. It is twenty eight minutes after nine o'clock and joining us in studio this morning, Christine Arnold is of course, city council representing Ward one with us and also Roswell Police Chief Phil Smith with us as well. Good morning. How's everybody doing today?
Very good, good.
Happy Friday.
I'm actually chipper because it's later in the morning.
You got to, you got to sleep in at a decent hour and everything. And well, let's face it. No one wants to get out of bed this morning because it's cloudy and overcast because that's perfect sleeping weather. So, so I, you know, you were, you're not alone this morning with, because I was like, I want to get sand bed too. Fortunately, it's always dark when I get up. So it doesn't really matter. But Chief, how you doing? It's first time we've had you on in a while. It's good to have you back on the radio. How's, how's life at the police department going?
You know, it's, it's, it's a pleasure to be able to wake up and do a job that you feel you were meant to do and it's so satisfying every day. But that's more like because of the people that I work with.
Sure.
So it's a, they're a hardworking, passionate group.
Well, and that's something that in, in, you know, obviously if you're family or in law enforcement or a family of, you know, you, you understand that mindset. But for people that have never experienced it, that's, you know, it's similar in military. It's, you know, it's a family. It's because let's face it, your officers see and do things every day that most of us don't ever want to see or be involved with. And that can mess with you after a while. And without that family like atmosphere, you know, leaning on each other, supporting each other, you know, in uniform and out of uniform, that's, that's the mindset of law enforcement. It's, you know, whether you're in uniform on duty or, you know, at someone's house on the weekend, you know, relax. And it's that same family mindset. And, and so it's a lot more than most other jobs. Those people, you know, yeah, oh, you go have a Super Bowl party with them, hang out. But, but these are people that are literally watching each other's back every day. And there's a special bond that, that develops there that you can't, unless you've been in, you can't quite put your finger on it. Is that a pretty fair assessment there?
Yeah, I would also liken it to a coop full of roosters.
That's right. They'll defend each other, but they'll also fight like brothers and sisters too.
Exactly the way I meant it.
It's like, they're gonna go to war with each other, but then they'll get a huge blow up over what color someone's shirt was on a cartoon.
There's an intense development of sarcasm in that building.
Yeah, but that's the tools of managing the job here. But, but we want to, for folks that missed it yesterday, there was a great informative session that was at the library yesterday in the Bondurth Room. And Miami Dade County, they're the mental health program. They put out, I guess, a video that really deals with, with crime and mental health and kind of how all that's connected. And, and you guys just kind of want to come and just really share some of that stuff and some of the stuff that, that we're learning and saying, you know, and, and obviously applying in our city and, and our law enforcement here. Is that, that pretty spot on about what we're doing here today?
I'll defer to Councilor Arnold as far as giving you the outline of the program because she is extremely passionate about it.
Yeah.
And she, she hooked me good because she sent me the video and it actually.
So this is something you stumbled across and then said, hey, I'm gonna show the chief on this.
It directly involves us, but it was Counselor Arnold. And I'll tell you, it brought a tear to my eye to watch that movie because anybody who doesn't, we all have family members involved in that type of circumstance. And we want to take the opportunity to try and help our community more. And that movie definitely plays, shows you a way to do it.
Gotcha. Very good. All right. So Christine.
I'll start with the fact, I'm gonna kind of give you a little bit of history. There is a statewide effort regarding mental health and some, an organization out of Albuquerque reached out to me. Oh, reached out to me because the mayor, she initially had reached out to the mayor and he recommended that I take a look at it. So I sat on this committee for a couple of months and then they recommended the video. Once I watched the video, the video is about Miami Dade County Judge Leafman, who about twenty years ago began a program, a mental health court diversion program.
Okay.
That actually helps people who have, you know, are, who are going through, have committed criminal act. They assess them and then move them out into a program to possibly treat the mental health issues with pure recovery. So they have a liaison over this year program to help get them back on track.
Gotcha.
And then work through that kind of program.
So it's a real program to kind of say, all right, you know, when we have someone that commits a crime, you know, rather than the punishment being going to jail, maybe we need to look at what caused them to think this and we need to look at it more as a treatment than a punishment for serving a crime you committed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's fix your brain so you're not doing this anymore and figure that in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Yes. And the, the film is actually called Definition of Insanity because it's pretty much that we are continuously doing the same thing by taking the people who have an issue and, and not, you know, rehabilitating them and then just in putting them in prison. Then they come out and they do, they repeat. It's like, you know, rinse, wash and repeat. We're just continuing that cycle. So, you know, I, one of the, my goals when elected was to look for alternatives to some of our crime and homeless issues. The Roswell Police Department has done a fabulous job, but they really need some support in addressing this from different angles.
Gotcha.
So when I saw this film, I of course went straight to the chief and he loved it. And then he took it to Judge Hudson, who has actually been looking and been familiar with it for about three, four years. So then I wanted to actually put it out to members of the community who were involved in, you know, the mental health profession, to our, our leaders, you know, county commissioners, our city counselors, educators, police force. We got it out there. And it was actually, I think we had a great turnout. We had about forty five professionals.
Standing room.
Great.
Yeah, the room was packed.
The Bondurth Room was standing room only. Good.
And I had a lot of feedback, but you know, I would actually like the chief to kind of expound on where he can, where he sees the benefit of this program in our community.
Yeah. Is it, is it kind of stuff where it's not only in the courts, but you know, things that your officers on the beat can implement as well?
I mean, we do, we do not enough mental health training. Let me put it that way. Okay. We, we are going to invest in crisis intervention training. We are going to invest in that, especially after this is starting to take hold. These are the steps that you take to start to build towards the problem. But when we talk about, you know, in police, police people, the crime, the penalty has to fit the crime. So if you have somebody who has a mental health issue or if somebody who has an addiction problem or sickness, putting them in a punitive situation like a correctional institute is not really assessing the problem.
Be honest, it could be making it worse.
It, it absolutely is wasting everyone's time and money in my humble opinion.
Yeah.
The, you need, if you've, these people, this particular section of our society, don't always know what they're doing is a criminal act or they don't have control over themselves. They're not your typical criminal. So they're not going to appreciate the correction end of, of punishment.
In their head, they didn't feel like they did anything wrong.
It's not getting them any better and they're gonna reoffend because they don't know what the problem is. So what we want to do is, what we've always tried to do in Roswell is we want to head problems off before they become crimes, before we have victims. This is right down that alley. I mean, we, we started an angel program in two thousand and fifteen for addiction. I would call it a failure. I mean, it's been, it's there. All the pieces are in place. The, the community liaisons that we had set up are all still there. Nobody, people that suffer from these, these problems sometimes don't recognize that, much the same as when they commit a crime.
Sure.
So they're not turning themselves in or asking for help. And if anybody in your family.
They think they're managing it.
They absolutely do, or they think they can manage it. And that's normal. That's a normal person. You want to be normal. But so what happens is now they end up in the court system. So your courts now are gonna, what it is, is this is actually the hard bounce that somebody may need to want to redirect their life. Because they have to do it themselves. These are adults. They have to change on their own. So the court, we're a system that takes care of our people, the courts, the police servants. That's what we are. So this person gets into court and we make an assessment that this guy, you know, this could have been avoided if maybe he had some treatment, if he had been better managed or he knew about his problems. It's just like me having high blood pressure or something. This is a manageable medical condition, but because it's the mind, they don't, they're gonna fight it.
There's a stigma.
Fight it. And there is a stigma as well, which demonizes unfortunately this sickness. So we don't want that. We want to take care of this section of our society. We want to cut down the recidivism rate. We want to make people healthier. We want to stop crime. And we want to, want to minimize victimization.
Sure.
This program answers the question.
Yeah, it sounds like it's getting at the source of the problem, not putting a Band-Aid on something.
And it's truly what we should be doing. If we are a contemporary society, we don't live in a cave. We're not, we're not burning sticks. This is a contemporary society and you take care of the people that are members of your community. And this is one of those treatments. And I, I'm sure the council is going to get to it, but I'm a money guy. And ten thousand dollars a cost to rehab somebody for twelve months, the same exact cost to incarcerate without any treatment is thirty second, thirty six thousand, depending on the community. The numbers are, and of course, you're gonna cut the recidivism rate. You're gonna make a healthier community.
At the end of the day, you're saving money because you spend the same amount there. And if that, that ten grand worked this time, where, where, let's do the numbers, crunch the numbers here. The odds are someone going back to jail once they've, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty high.
And it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
If they're successful in the program and they rehabilitate themselves and there's, there's guidance through the whole thing, you don't just turn them loose to medicate themselves. They, this program, what I really liked about it is they are managed. They have coaches floating around with them. They have places to meet. They have access to the, to what they need. And if they're not showing up, somebody tails them and gets them in. So it's like, like you have a coach or helper with you until you succeed. And when you succeed, they drop the charges.
That's great.
At the end of it. It absolutely is because it gives you a chance to start fresh without that problem. And if, and if they, some people can't make it through if, and that's, you know, where people make mistakes, but they will go through the correctional system.
Sure.
But we would much prefer to make our community more healthy and take care of every member.
Well, and, and, and that's just it. I think once a lot of the folks, you kind of open their eyes to what, what, you know, it's like, look, you've been trying to manage this and you're losing dude. You're not, you're not winning. We, you think you are, but you're not. Let us help you get that. And then once you kind of pull back that, that, that curtain a little bit and get through, then the program probably works amazing. And, and it sounds like with this program, they're gonna keep going at you because I think like other programs have tried something maybe similar, but the problem is at some point someone gives up. And it's like, because let's face it, some people accept with open arms. Some you gotta, you gotta show it to them sixty or seventy times before that it finally makes a dent there. And, and with, for those people, they probably get lost to the cracks because people eventually wash the hands of them or, or you know what I mean? And, and it sounds like this program almost doesn't let that happen. It's like, okay, you're gonna keep screwing up? Fine. But guess what? Someone's gonna be knocking on your door and coming and getting you back in here until you figure it out. And, and not coming from a place of punishment, but coming from a place of no, no, no. This is what we gotta do. We gotta get you here. And I, you know what I mean? You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
It's that follow on because at some point, somebody is gonna go just slip through the cracks because either the people wash the hands of them, whether it's family or the government or whomever it is, somebody does that. And, and I think this might cut down on some of that and, and make that where people that are harder to make them see the light. You're gonna invest more time and opportunity into making sure that they stay on that path or, or get back on that path.
So I, I do want to bring this up. The whole goal of that watch discussion yesterday was to get feedback from our professionals here in our community. Because the chief and I know very well that there have been groups working to resolve some of our mental health issues in our community. We wanted to tie in the connection of possibly utilizing the courts and bringing in a diversion program and get their, their feedback. Because I, you know, I want to give the mental health community, you know, a lot of credit. They have been working diligently. And I think the goal for the chief and I was to figure out where the issues lie. And so we, I think we both learned quite a bit because, you know, about what, what the next step should be and, and what their thoughts are and why they're having issues getting things established. And a lot of it, I believe, has to do with funding and support from some leadership. And so that's really the key there.
I, I've, I've been saying, I said it last hour and I keep, I'll say it to the highest rooftop. I keep saying this, we need to, what I keep calling Susan G. Coleman, mental health. And what I mean by that is treat mental health like we treat breast cancer, where you can, you know, in October where there's pink ribbons and there's so much awareness and money being raised about it. We need to treat mental health that same way. We need to get gazillions of dollars doing Walk for Hopes and things like that towards mental health. And I think we'll start seeing the progress in those advancements, in those programs, in those things, you know, where, where not only do we have, you know, our governments, you know, working, but having the private sector involved. These, these medical institutions and funding them. So they incentivizes them to, to, to research in mental health and to do the things, you know, because that's where it is. It's about money. I don't care what anybody says. And that's why you buy the blue pills because those in excess pay for the diabetes pills. You know what I mean? In, in the big scheme of things. So getting that funding, getting that thing to where, whether it's medicine, whether it's programs, whatever it is we can do to fix some of these issues that we currently have, or at least understand what's going on. I, I, I think, I think it starts with just throwing as much money, like you said, funding. It starts there, but once that happens, then the people are incentivized to be in place to actually fix these problems.
Well, I would, I would actually say that the tide is turning towards mental health awareness. Previously, we, we, we knew it was a problem, but as far as getting the complete support. But you can just see with the legislator, legislature in this last session, the actual bills of support for mental health that were passed are very profound. The Supreme Court just created a commission to address mental health. And of course, Judge Hudson, we're very happy to hear that he was, he was actually appointed to be on that. So we have local support there. But that tells me that it is time for Roswell to put some plans of action together to get ready and to basically take this bull by the horns.
So for you as a, as a city councilor, is part of that just barking up the state's tree for funding there and things? I mean, because obviously the city is gonna do what it can with the resources it can, need to partner with other entities. But at the end of the day, the state kind of funds a lot of what we do here because, you know, they, they control the gross receipts and they control the money that comes in.
The city council probably would not have a lot as far as a lot to do that.
Okay. I didn't know if that's something that you guys have to appeal to Santa Fe for.
I'm not necessarily speaking for the city council. I'm out here as a city councilor because in Ward one, homeless issues and crime is a big proponent of what my constituents talk to me about.
Gotcha.
So I, of course, I'm looking for a solution. I wanted to make sure that the city councils were educated so that if they did have the opportunity to support, they would be well aware.
Sure.
Of options. But yeah, I see the, the primary thing that I could be assistance of is pushing leaders to support with funding.
Makes sense.
And she's pushed me.
It seems like you got, you got the right heads looking at it here.
I'll tell you this, we, we have a lieutenant who, you know, you'd think that he's not too busy because he has, you know, he has a couple of clerical people working underneath him, but he handles our accreditation. And he handles our grant funding. And he has made me aware that there's an awful lot of money out there for mental health.
Good.
But the, the, the simple fact of the matter is you have to have some type of structure in place for the money to go to.
Gotcha. So you gotta, you gotta start the initial and then once that happens, they'll, the money roll in.
We're taking the steps. And the council and I were just talking this morning about, we're trying to rehash, beat our chest a little bit about how the, the turnout was yesterday. And we, we know that we may not get the Miami program that's been in place for twenty years.
Sure.
But we want to get ahold of the building blocks, the stage of it, which was some of the input we got last night from our, the, the people involved in this community. They said, you need those building blocks. And get something going. And then let it build from there and design it all along. But I also want to point out the fact that this is the right community to try this with, not just, not because of the mental health. And I also want to say the mental health can be somebody who's just worn down mentally to all the way to what you see in the movies. It's not like that. It's a wide array of people that could suffer from mental health.
I, I would argue if you, if you've been alive on this earth for the last three years, you're suffering with some mental health issues right now. Every single one of us in some way, shape or form. You know, it, it's just how we cope and deal with those kinds of things.
But this is a community that donated four drug dogs to their police department.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not a small, I, I was hoping you could get one and we had four by the end of the year.
Can I brag a little bit? The chief had told me this just a few minutes before we were going on air here and we were just talking like, you know, how different this community is and, and you don't see that elsewhere. And, and that's what, you know, and obviously, you know, you could tell by his accent, he's been a, been in a, in a police department or two around the country here. And, and so, you know, so, and, and he, chief basically said, look, I've been to other places department. I don't see that kind of love and support at those places that I've seen since I've been here in Roswell. So.
You see it in sections, but not like it is here. I know, I, now keep in mind, I've been in Roswell for almost eleven years now. Losing on eleven years. I got a pretty good grip on what's going on.
Sure. You, you've been around a block or two in here in Roswell.
But I, and they've worn down my resistance. So I, I mean, but this, this is a very different community as far as the way they support their public servants.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not, I mean, I talked to my, I still have colleagues over the country, back east, and I boast about how we're treated. Because we went through, I mean, it's a tough time for law enforcement right now. It is a tough time. It's, it trends. I've been in this almost four decades now. So I've seen the ups and the downs. We're in a down right now. But we don't feel it as much here in Roswell. And I'm not saying it because I want the other foot to drop. I'm saying it because it's based on history.
Sure.
We get treated very well here in this community. I don't know if it's because we're an island isolated from everyone else. I don't know. It's because we don't get hurricanes. I don't know what it is, but the, the people are very warm and, and friendly and welcoming to their police force.
Sure.
And it's, and you know, we have people that we have to deal with on a professional basis, but it's a very small fraction of the community. So it's, the majority of the community is fantastic.
And, and, and I think it's also the give and take because, and I can speak for this in my own personal experiences, anytime, and I've been here about twenty years. Every time I've dealt with a Roswell police officer in any way, whether it's because I needed something law enforcement related or just see someone at the, at the store and the, and the, I always get that your person first and talk to you. Like even, like, like years ago, we had a dog situation with neighbors and then we had to get the police involved. And, and they come over and, 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 and they talk to you like you're a human and deal, you know what I mean? And I think that for people that have an image of what, what, when a law enforcement officer comes on a scene, how they're gonna act. And yeah, obviously they're trying to triage and they're thinking safety first, but, but at the same time, they still talking to you like you're, you know what I mean? And, and you're part of the conversation. You're not being talked down to. You're, 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 you know what I'm saying?
We're not in, we're not in us and them agency. We are a service agency and it's pushed from when they're brand new, that we are here. These are our people. This is our community. And I will attribute a lot of the, the person, treat, personal treatment that we get is, or what we give is based on home cooking. We're drawing a lot from, we're drawing a lot of local talent into our police force. And I think it makes a huge difference.
Absolutely. People are more invested in their own home. And, and when you hire law enforcement that grew up and live in, in, in Roswell or Chavis County here, that this is their home and they're going to defend it or protect it. I'm not saying a law enforcement officer from out of town is not going to be equally as good.
They're pretty good too.
But, but what I'm saying is there's going to be a passion there that maybe someone that hasn't called this place home for a long time would share. And, and, and I imagine for you as a, as a chief hiring thing, you, you probably find out that your, your, your twenty year deputy or twenty year patrol officers, those ones that have been there twenty, twenty-five, thirty, most of them probably grew up in this area. You know what I'm saying?
Something else. They've earned their retirement.
Yeah. Yeah. They've done that too. But, but ones that have been with the RPD that long, odds are they probably were born and raised in this area or nearby. You know what I mean? Where, whereas, you know, and I'm not saying there's some great law enforcement that moved from other states and come here and do an excellent job, but, but they're learning to love it. Whereas those other folks have already, you know, they, they've been green chili eyes and, you know, all the things that makes New Mexico, New Mexico, they're into, you know? And so that does make a difference, I think it does. And then hopefully the ones that come in, you're kind of like, let, let them rub off when they start being a part of the family there at the, at the, at the police station. Then, then they, you know, get turned into Roswellites too at some point. They hang out a little longer. And that's, that's what that thing is. But I'm guessing just, and I have no idea. I've never seen stats or numbers. But I bet if you looked at the history of the Roswell Police Department, you looked at all the retirement off, retired officers from that, the ones that have put in those long years, all at the RPD, probably most of them born and raised in this area.
I've, I've watched some incredible talent retire here in my eleven years. They, the type of offices that you have here in this community, I say without hesitation. The people I used to read about back east.
Gotcha.
In a positive way. They, they, they do it here. They walk the walk. They walk the walk. They do it. High caliber of character. And I'll, I'll tell you, I just, I'm impressed every day. Keeps me awake, you know, and it's, and it keeps me sharp.
But I imagine, you know, because I'm imagining you're at a point in your life that if you wanted to retire and settle down, you could do that.
Think about it frequently.
But you're still here, which probably speaks as much volume for the people that, that serve with you as it does though that you that serves them. You know what I mean? And that's, that, that's, that's just those types of things that as you get older, you start noticing about people. And then you kind of get the real picture of how things work when you see stuff like that. Stuff that's never publicly advertised or publicly. So like, yeah, that guy's been there thirty years. It's, you know, it's, you look at like city or, or county or anything, you see those employees have been there thirty, forty years. And you're like, when you see that every month at the meetings, there's someone there thirty years. That's, that tells a sign of how they're doing there. And that, and if people are willing to stay there that long consistently, there's probably some good things going on there. That's, it's just an indicator. You know what I mean? And when you see that with the police department, that's that indicator for me. So while I got you on this, and we got about two, three minutes here before we gotta go. Plug the recruitment. I know you guys are always looking for great officers to, to come be a part of the Roswell Police Department. Talk that up a little bit.
Well, I'm gonna talk it up. All right. We have five openings right now, but we have five openings sitting in the bank waiting to be filled.
Good.
So come on down.
Good deal.
We offer a fantastic benefits package. It's a job that you'll wake up every morning and thrive and be proud. And you get to do something different every day. You can be the coach. You can be the hero. You can be the EMT. You can break up a fight. You can do it all. You can do it all here at Roswell and you'll do it every day, every week. But the thing is, is that I want to remind people out there, you're young, young men and women, the defined benefit pension system will not be here forever. And what it is, is a guaranteed retirement. When you, so many years in your age, when you retire, you'll be guaranteed a check when you're older like me and you can't pull your weight anymore. So the, I've already retired from New Hampshire once, but the, this, that defined benefit pension, it's not a 401K. It's not a 457. It is a fantastic thing. And we can get it, we can start you at nineteen years old, eighteen, if you're really mature as a PSA, a police service agent. And you're in the retirement system and we will start training you and preparing you for when, if you're twenty years old entering the academy and you'll be twenty-one when you graduate, you'll be on the books. And you could be retiring at, I don't, I think it's twenty-five year pension now, but still twenty-five years. If you go in at seventeen, eighteen years old, this is a, this is a gig that's not offered anywhere else.
That's great. And here's the part I love too is, is, you know, because some people might get inert, you know, oh, we're going to the academy because you gotta get through the academy to become a law enforcement officer. The, the Roswell Police Department just doesn't say, all right, good luck at the academy and send you off. They're gonna train you and prep you. So by the time you're, you're going to academy, you probably know it better than some of the instructors. You know what I'm saying? You just, you, you'll have a, a complete understanding of what you're gonna be going through, preparing, whether it's the physical side, we gotta get you, you know, running a little better or just the, the vast amount of knowledge that a law enforcement officer has to have.
You will not be thrown out in the middle of the park. We, we make sure you are prepared. The other thing is you do a month downstairs, one-on-one coaching with one of our recruiters, you know, three or four recruits down there. Then they'll do sixteen weeks at the academy. And we have a sixteen week, actually comes out to sixteen week field training program. And you are, you are trained, ready to go. We are leaders at the academy. And right now we're working at putting together our satellite academy, which will be here in Roswell.
Oh, great.
So we've already been approved by it. Now we're going through the auditing process, making sure we have all the component pieces that we need. And I'm very optimistic that we'll have it up and going. I was hoping for early two thousand and twenty-three, but I was told it'll probably be a little later than that. But still, it's in play. And what that'll be for a benefit is our recruits will be able to go home at night.
Awesome.
Instead of sending them three hours up to Santa Fe and leaving them a week and have a drive back. Yeah. And, and sometimes that's a, that's a, that wipes out some interest. You know, if you're sitting there going, man, I don't want to spend five days away from my brand new wife and my brand new baby. Or, you know, I'd rather be here. Plus, the real reason for that is it's not really the travel. I want them Roswellized. And I don't want them away for sixteen weeks. I want them here. I want them to be comfortable with our people here, start to get an idea about the Roswell way, you know, the stores here, the people here, the workers here, fellow employees for the city. All that stuff is washed for sixteen weeks. Because when you get home, you're not hobnobbing with anybody except your family for two days and you're going back. So anyways, that's, that's one of the things.
But. It integrates their life into the law enforcement lifestyle a little bit better. Yeah, it makes sense.
It would just work very well for us for recruiting and retention. It'll be outstanding. You know, those are the things we have going on. It's.
Good deal. But if you go, I know that if you go to the city's website, rosal-nm.gov, you'll find a link. If you go into the, I believe it's the city government tab, you'll see one for the police department. Right there you can see the, the application, the process, everything you write, need right there. And of course, don't hesitate to call the police department if you have any questions or, or talk. If you're out and about and you're going to have lunch at McDonald's or something, you see a, a law, an officer having lunch there with them, ask them questions and they, they'd like, they, they don't mind. You know, if they're busy doing a, a, their job, let them do their job. But if they're just having lunch or something and you want to say hi and thank them, but, and then pick their brain a little bit about what life as a law enforcement officer is for Roswell. A lot of them will love to talk to you about that stuff.
We have our new banners up too. We just put our new banners up. They look good. And we have, and you name it, we have it. As far as divisions, we got investigations, narcotics, we got SWAT. We have K nine. We, you name it.
K nine's back, which I think a lot of people are happy about.
Yeah. And it's their drug dogs. You know, they're purposeful. We've got a virtual range downstairs. You could feel like you're in a video game. And, but it's for de-escalation purposes, but it is, it's good. And this age group loves it. So.
It makes the training much more, you know, sticks home to them, I think.
We're staying with it. And this, and we have a supportive community, which not every police department can say that.
And we thank our community for that support. That's what makes it great.
I, I would actually like to put one last plug in.
Absolutely.
For mental health and, and just let your listeners know that with our meeting yesterday, we were able to reach out to Representative Greg Nybert.
Okay.
Commissioner Dara Dana, the mayor, and they have all showed their support in coming up with solutions. Um, Commissioner Dara Dana, the mayor, and they have all, um, showed their support in coming up with solutions to mental health.
So city, county, state representatives all working together.
I do want to let the listeners know that the, the chief and I will continue looking for solutions on how we're gonna get this built from the ground up.
Well, and let's face it, we all know that it's gonna take more than just the city to do that. It's gonna take, it's gonna take the city, the county, the state.
Probably even some federal.
Absolutely. All parties involved because we are all dealing with this problem at every level and it will not get better until we address it. And this is, this is the direction we need to take it.
Absolutely. I'm excited.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Anytime. And love to, anytime you guys want to come on, even if it's, you know, I can talk Tarantino with you for a half hour if you want.
Any movie he puts out, I gotta watch it. He's had, the, one of them was a bomber. He had a, it was all, I can't even think of the name. It was all in different red and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't go for that one, but I like his other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And but, but me personally, I, I think Pulp Fiction's probably my favorite of the bunch. You know, there's a lot I like, but that's my one seed. So, but probably because of my growing up at times and when you catch it and all that.
Which one do you like the best, Lance? I'm coming to your house right now, Lance.
I happen to like Guy Ritchie a little more, but Guy Ritchie's kind of the same genre, but a little bit different.
Yeah, that's true. Same vein, different, different, different way of thinking, presenting kind of the same kind of stuff.
Coen Brothers.
Yeah, they do a great job of that too. So, but thank you.